Good afternoon, Marvin. Commissioner Norman is calling in actually from downstairs and he'll be participating in the pre-agenda telephonically, but he'll be up here for the seven o'clock meeting. So I'll call to order the Tuesday, June 15th, 2021's pre-agenda meeting. I'll let that to order. And we'll run through any adjustments to the agenda, Ms. Moll.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We do have two adjustments. The first one is a modification under announcements of vacancies on boards and commissions and the school facility task force announcement. Instead of two, it's actually one announcement on that. So we just need to make a modification on the number of announcements. And then the second item is the removal under appointments to boards and commissions. We need to pull the jury commission. We've actually received some additional interests, so we're going to bring you all of those at our next meeting.
Okay. How many other boards and commissions do we have multiple applicants for that will hear in July?
These that are on this list are all reappointments with no other, if I remember correctly, no other interest.
Right.
That's why we're pulling the jury commission, because that one, there are multiple.
Okay. How many other are there? I mean, there's Mitchell, there's Mooresville ETJ, now the jury commission.
Okay, so we have four other boards. Some of them, quite frankly, some of them, we don't have applications, so they're still gathering applications. And then others, we have more than just the appointment. So we're gathering all that information and that will come to the board at our next meeting.
If you could send all the commissioners' copies of the applicants where we have multiple.
Yes, absolutely.
Before we get the packet for next, as soon as you can.
And I will just say that the town of Mooresville has asked to hold on their ETJ appointments because of the redistricting. It's better just to wait, let the redistricting occur, and then do the appointments after that. So that one is going to be delayed until that is complete.
Thank you. Appointments before the board this evening. Item six, we'll be hearing from the Iredell County Health Department on the Iredell County 2020 Community Health Improvement Plan and State of the County Health Report. Item seven, public hearings. We'll have three public hearings this evening. First is a public hearing to request by Jeffrey Sanudo to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville. Mr. Todd, do you have anything to add about that?
This is pretty straightforward.
Our second public hearing is a hearing to consider amending Section 6.5 of the Iredell County Code of Ordinances to eliminate late return fines at the public library. And we'll hear a presentation on that at seven o'clock when we hear, have the public hearing. Item 7.3 is a public hearing to consider an economic development incentive for Project Champion. Likewise, Ms. Bozer will present that at seven o'clock. That brings us to Section 8, our administrative matters, and we have a number of those on the agenda. So I'll ask our steadfast county manager, Ms. Moll, to tee those up and run through all of those requests.
Great. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item is a request from Robert McHale for approval of a temporary access easement for the South Iredell High School property. And Gary Thomas is here to answer any questions, but this is a request that came resulting from a property owner that is adjacent and/or behind actually the property at South Iredell High School. Since that property, we owe money on that property. The name of the property and the deed and title is actually in Iredell County's name, but it is school property. So the request came to us. We sent that to the school board for them to look at and for them to give input on that. And they did have two things that they had requested be added to the language, which has been agreed upon and added in the language that you see before you. And basically, those stipulations were just if they needed to terminate it sooner, because it is a temporary easement, that they had the right to do that and that Mr. McHale would maintain the easement while he was utilizing it. So, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Thomas if he has any other things to add, or Ms. Valdez, because she was working on this as well. Any questions?
I don't have anything else to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Consent?
Consent. Thank you. The next item is a request from Partners Behavioral Health for approval of a joint resolution to increase the number of seats on the Board of Directors. And Mr. Jeff, there's Jeff, Mr. Jeff Eads is here for this presentation to the board.
And Mr. Thomas, unless you want to hang around just out of idle curiosity, you're done.
Evening, folks. It's been a while, so it's nice to see everybody.
Yeah.
And thank you for allowing me to present this. And the reason I'm doing this is Partners is growing. And for those of you who haven't heard, Union, Stanley, and Cabarrus Counties will be joining Partners on September the first of this year. And then also to let you know, Forsyth County is in the works currently right now, which will be joining later, probably around the new year. So, and there's also been some scuttle lately with Cardinal Innovations Healthcare, which is headquartered in Charlotte. They've announced an alignment or a merger with Via Health out of the West, which with Via will be the lead on that merger. So there's going to probably be some movement again with some of the counties that may choose to not align with Via, that may choose another LME/MCO.
Didn't Mecklenburg terminate their contract with Cardinal? Or didn't Mecklenburg terminate their relationship with Cardinal?
Their board.
Tell them they were going to.
Yeah, much like Union, Stanley, and Cabarrus and now Forsyth have done, Mecklenburg's Board of County Commissioners voted to basically stop their alignment with Cardinal Innovations. And they have chosen to align with Alliance Healthcare, which is another LME/MCO that's more in the Durham area. So they're going to, kind of like us, Alliance will be working with them to bring them on board. So, yeah, in the not-so-distant future, there will no longer be a Cardinal as a result of all this. Those counties will be moved to other places. So, of course, Union, Stanley, and Cabarrus were part of that, and they've chosen Partners. And what this resolution does is it helps us with some language that is in general statute right now. It's actually in 122(c), which starts off with an area board shall have no fewer than 11 and no more than 21 voting members. Well, currently, we have 21 voting members, and we're bringing on more counties, so that's not going to work if we're going to, again, have our representative model that we have at Partners. So the gist of it is this resolution will protect and increase county representation on our board. And kind of the reason we're starting this now is with those counties joining September 1st, in order, the general statute again requires us to get resolutions from each of our counties. Then the Secretary of Department of Health and Human Services must approve that after she reviews. And then after that, we would need to be working with those counties to, for them to determine which commissioner or designee would be appointed to the Partners Board. They wouldn't have to go through that approval process and be sworn in. And we're trying to get all that accomplished by September 1. So hence the resolution that's before you.
Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Consent?
Consent.
Mr. Eads, thank you very much for all that Partners does. It's a great benefit to our citizens, quality responsive care, and we appreciate Partners' Board's interaction with us.
Thank you.
And being responsive to concerns or needs that we've communicated to you in the past.
And we welcome Commissioner Brown to the board. Your first meeting will be in August. We don't meet in July, so you get a month off right away. So I look forward to working with you. I've developed quite the good working relationship with Marvin Norman over the past several years, so I want to do that in kind. So, a little forward to it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next item was a request from Emergency Medical Services for approval to apply for Stateful ABC Board for funding to focus on alcoholism and substance use disorder support and education within the community. Ms. Blair Ritchie is here with this presentation.
Good afternoon. We have applied and received these funds for the past couple of years, and we would like to continue that pattern. We've had great success, I think, and you guys have heard me, but we've had great success in using these funds to diversify off our current grant funding. So our current grant funding really only allows us to work with opiate-related cases, but this helps us diversify to other substance use disorder, alcoholism, and help support that personnel initiative as well as education in the community. And it has helped us buy materials for 12-step programs and things like that, and materials that we can also offer families. So we would like permission to apply for that again, and it is a total of $15,000.
Any questions from Ms. Ritchie?
Consent.
Miss Ritchie also has the next item, which is a request from Emergency Medical Services for approval to participate in RACE CARE's randomized trial. Excuse me.
It is a mouthful, and there are lots of acronyms, but I will spell them all out. So we probably, I think it was in December, we were invited to participate in another trial. And I'm not sure if I ever got to close the loop on a previous trial that we participated in, but previously, we participated in a medication trial just with the state of North Carolina. And I'm happy to say that that protocol, that we weren't a control group, we were the trial group, that protocol has now been implemented across the state and it 100% improved the survivability in this county. So I'm super excited about that. You know, sometimes you enter into studies and you don't know what's going to happen, and it was definitely a positive outcome. So another study has come around. Approximately 50 to 70 counties across North Carolina have been asked to join this. We have been labeled as a potential control group, and so we won't have to change any of our practices or protocols for CPR, but it is to study cardiac arrest survival rates over a seven-year period. And so it is going to literally follow a patient with their permission, so we will help, you know, gain their permission. It will only be with their permission. We will help them make contact with our individuals that survive cardiac arrest. And so if we go out and we have a cardiac arrest survival, you know, we will help them connect with Duke University. It's a study that's supported through them over eight, I think it's seven years, and they will take that data and look very closely at the significance of bystander CPR, CPR instructions given over, you know, through ECOM 911 and things like that. And so we don't have to change anything. We already enter into the CARES Registry Data Center, which is the Cardiac Arrest Registry to Enhance Survival, lots of acronyms. So we already do that, and they are looking to compensate us a little bit for our time to provide this data to them. And the data is all limited data sets, so it's, you know, very, very small amounts of data. And again, it's only with permission from the patient. Will a call center make contact up to seven years following? So it's a really neat study. So we're just asking for permission to sign the agreement to participate in the trial.
I've got one quick question for you, Blair. I was just wondering, as I was reading through this and you were explaining it, would the ones that are being followed, if you will, the patient, for lack of a better term, are they ones that have actually received CPR?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's not just ones having a heart attack, has a heart attack, and is driven with a friend to the hospital, it's ones who actually have had CPR administered to them either by EMS or by.
Bystanders.
Okay, so it's just information on that.
But they will have encountered EMS. So we're kind of that, I guess you could say, that centralized data collection piece. So if someone calls 911, their family member starts CPR, EMS comes, we continue CPR efforts, they turn around, they survive the encounter, and they leave the hospital, and they're neurologically intact. So they're back at home and they're living a full life. Those are the individuals they're wanting to work with to study this in depth about the effects of all, the whole process.
Sure.
So I think it's really neat, and this should drive national, like how we care for patients nationally. So this should drive, this is the biggest study they've done, and so hopefully, if you guys are okay with it, we'd love to participate.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Any further questions?
If I pass out, don't let Jean give me CPR.
Want to just follow up on that.
Hands only.
It'll be seven years of good health after.
It's hands only, you're good. You just part of the study.
Consent?
Consent.
Marvin?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Blair.
The next item is a request from Parks and Recreation for approval of Stewart as the recommended firm for design and construction administration for Jennings Park Phase 1. And we have both Mr. Salibi and Ms. Huppler here to make this presentation to the board.
Everyone, thanks for the opportunity to be in front of you. It's great to see you again. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. No, I just want to make sure. As Ms. Moll said, we're here before you tonight to request approval of a recommended firm to do the design and construction administration for Phase 1 at Jennings Park. The Iredell County Parks and Recreation Department, along with the purchasing division, the project manager, would like to make this recommendation. We would like to recommend Stewart as the firm selected for approval. The comprehensive review team consisted of Antonia Stanz, David Salibi, Dean Lael, Joseph Pierce, myself, and Paul Moore, who is considered a subject matter expert and Parks and Recreation Director for Davie County. We conducted a thorough process that included paper reviews of the RFQs as well as interviews, in-person interviews. So there were six firms that submitted, and we interviewed three. And of those three firms, it was determined, based on the scoring process and decision-making and discussion, that Stewart was the best fit for this role for us. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I know Mr. Salibi also had some information that he could share as well. I think it's important to note that Stewart's prepared to work directly with our existing contractors who are already working on the project and can get started right away if approved.
What was the cost? I may have missed it somewhere. Could use this company.
I also have Emily Blackwell from Stewart, who's present with us tonight as well.
If I may help with that, the RFP process was for professional services, so once you choose the selected firm, then you negotiate the price with that. So this was not a bid process where they submit the cost. It's you look for the professional services and the one that you want to use, and then you negotiate.
It's based on qualifications. It was an RFQ.
Correct. Right.
Are they part of the ones that did the original drawing, the one that I saw there?
They did. They've participated with us since the beginning, helped develop the initial concept design, went through the public input process with us as well. So they have been involved since the beginning of the project at the current location. Yes, sir.
Well, it's an assumption, then, that if you weren't happy with that, the services provided thus far, they wouldn't have scored as well as they did.
Correct. I think it is important to note, though, that in the beginning, they worked directly with myself and my staff, but we brought in the additional reviewers to make sure that it was unbiased and objective as possible.
Well, it looked like all the applicants were well-qualified and had, you know, good packets. So difficult decisions. They all scored in the same general area.
Very close. It was a very close score.
Any additional questions? Comments? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
It's nice to see in print shovels turning in the spring of 2022.
Thank you.
The next item is a request from the Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 51 to appropriate additional revenue received in the Property and Liability Fund to cover the cost of adding comprehensive coverage to all sheriff's vehicles. And Ms. Cheek is here to make this presentation.
Hello. This year, we made a change in our property and liability insurance regarding the sheriff's vehicles, and we added comprehensive coverage to vehicles that were eight years older or less. And so we've had some excess revenue come into that fund, and we were waiting to see how we kind of evened out at the end of the year, and we're asking for an additional appropriation of $35,900 to cover the expenses in that fund.
Any questions or comments? Consent?
Consent. Thank you. The next item is a request from ICATS for approval of Budget Amendment Number 52 in the amount of $171,661 for EcoLine Transportation Scheduling Software. Mr. Johnson is here for this presentation.
Good evening. Tonight's request is for the budget amendment for the additional $171,661 for the EcoLane software. We have additional revenues this year from CARES money and other subsidies that have been awarded to us. And so whenever we made the decision to go ahead and make this, this changes the software, we thought we had all the money in our account for this year, but with catalytic converters and a lot of other things that were also unexpected costs, we do not have the full $171,000 in there. So we would like to appropriate that money for the software.
So how much were you short?
Well, I just, I went ahead and asked for the full amount.
Yeah, I noticed.
It's, I think we're about $40,000 to $50,000 short. But it was just easier to have it as one lump sum, so it had everything in the right line item in the budget as well.
Is this an American Recovery Act qualified expense?
I do believe that the money is coming from CARES Act funds. I'm looking at Ms. Cheek.
It's from the self-care.
Correct. ICATS received, much like the Health Department, much like EMS, they received their own appropriation of CARES Act funds. And according to this, it's coming from that appropriation of CARES Act funds that ICATS received.
It is. It's coming from CARES money, not directly, but indirectly, because other expenses that would have been local funds were able to be CARES Act funded. The CARES Act funding doesn't allow us to actually purchase capital, or we can only use it for operating. But with not recognizing those funds earlier in the year, now we're able to recognize those CARES Act funds, and then, so it's indirectly using CARES money.
But it's coming from CARES Act 5307 funds?
Yes, the 5307 CARES Act fund, usually there's a 50% local match for any of our fixed routes. And so with the CARES money, there was 100%, so we did not have to have a 50% local match. So this is the local match that we would usually use for those funds, or what we are actually using to purchase this now. So without the 5307 CARES money, we wouldn't have had the extra revenue to do this.
Okay. Well, that helps put it in context and perspective. Any additional questions, comments? Consent?
Consent.
Marvin? Thank you.
Thank you. The next item was a request from Planning and Development to consider calling for a public hearing on July 20th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. in regard to a request by Gordon Johnson to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville. Mr. Todd is here.
Matthew?
Good evening. This first one, again, it's just for the call for the release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction. Outlined in blue on the screen, we've had several of these over the last few months, and it looks like we've got several more coming over the next few months with the development going on, especially in the south end of the county.
Now, this is under Tab 9, right? This is actually. This is actually, you skipped one here.
There's two zoning subdivision releases.
Johnson's number eight.
Their general shapes look similar, so yes, I think I had them switched.
There we go.
Yeah, so this is the 75-acre. It's adjacent to some properties that we've recently released to the west of this site at some recent meetings. It is for another residential development, mixture of single-family and townhomes. And again, this is just for the call for the public hearing.
Have they applied for annexation?
They have applied for annexation, yes.
Any questions? This is obviously just a call for the public hearing and not the approval. Consent?
Consent.
Yes.
Mr. Todd also has the next item, which is a similar item, but this is a request by Katie Bradley for zoning and subdivision release.
Now, we've got the correct one. This one's off Linville Road. It's a little bit larger, 240-plus or minus acres. Part of these parcels is already in Mooresville's jurisdiction, so they're just requesting the piece, about 104 acres. It's in the county's jurisdiction. And again, this is just for a call. And we've got other interests in properties surrounding this one that we will probably be seeing in the coming months for releases.
I'll ask again, have they also applied for annexation?
Yes. Well, they have not applied for yet, but that is the plan, to apply for annexation, yes.
All right. Consent?
Consent.
Yes.
The next item is a request from Tax Administration for approval of May 2021 refunds and releases, and there are no commissioner names on this list.
Any questions or comments? Consent?
Consent.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is a request from the Clerk to the Board to appoint a voting delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference to be held in August of 2021. And this conference will be held in New Hanover County on August 14.
Well, as everyone knows, Commissioner Howe represents the district that our county is part of. Are you able to wear both hats?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. The will of the Board has consent to appoint Commissioner Howe to be the voting delegate for the NCACC conference in August 2021.
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. The final item is a continuation from our previous board meeting, and this is an update on the county construction projects. And based on conversations and direction from the Board, we have modified somewhat the presentation. And I believe in your packet, you have a large, a large piece of paper that you can pull out that looks like this, that Mr. Salibi is going to go through with you. And this has all the information. It was requested to have it in writing and then have it presented as well. So he has prepared that for you. He'll go through this, and then you can ask any questions regarding our current construction projects. Mr. Salibi?
Thank you. I will go in as much detail as you wish, or as you can stand. But again, this was in your packet, so you should be able to digest it fairly easy. Over on the left side, where it starts with brief scope of project and those listings under project title, those are specific questions that were asked for us to give answers to or comment to. And some of these, last week, or yeah, last, two weeks ago, we went over in detail. Government Center Project 2U, if you walked into this building, you see what we've started this past week. And we've given the detail of each project under 2U. Throughout all our projects, if you look to see under total cost of project estimated, in parentheses, we put the year it was estimated. Things have changed a little bit. And when bids come, a bid day is the day of the project cost. So we estimated this project in 2019 between 500,000 and 700,000. The low bid was 878, 845, which you approved, I think, two meetings ago. There's a question about where is leftover contingency going? And that is always determined by Finance and the Board. Once we turn over the project and we return contingency, that's our goal, the more, the better, then Finance and the Board, the county determines where it goes. And that will be throughout all of our projects.
And if I could just note, if these are, if they're large projects, for example, if it's the Public Safety Center, it had its own project fund. So when that was closed out, that money reverts back to the general fund, if there's any residual. Jail, the same way. But if it's a project that is funded in the Capital Improvement Plan, which is the multiple-year plan, and it's funded in that CIP, when we finish that project, that money goes back into the CIP to cover overages for other CIP projects. So what we do, for example, this one is a great example. It was estimated in 2019. The current cost of construction has gone up dramatically since 2019, so the actual bid came in higher. But because we, any savings from projects, we leave it in the CIP to help cover this, we've got money in the CIP for it. And that's the reason that we do this, because these projects take multiple years to get going. You can see some of them, we estimated back in 2018. So that's why we try, if we have savings in other CIP projects, we keep the money in the CIP to cover overages for others. So again, if it's a CIP, the contingency reverts back to the CIP or unspent funds. If it's a separate project ordinance, then when that is closed out, it would go into the general fund. Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Salibi.
Great, thank you for all the help. There's a question that was asked, that's asked on all the projects. Are any unforeseen issues? Well, I expect to see unforeseen issues on this building every time we dig. I mean, it's just a nature of an 1899 building. It's going to be there. Now, I will say that these projects, all the way through, we were asked to give the original bid cost. It's not the total project. Total project also has approved contingencies in it. But these are our bid costs, so that's what we provided you, okay? Any questions on the Government Center 2U? And 2U just means Phase 2 underground. 2A was Phase 2 roof, or whatever we had.
Above ground.
Above ground. There you go, above ground. Then the Library ERV project, you approved two weeks ago, and we're just getting off the ground. There'll be surprises there, because it's a 21-year-old site. But right now, things are moving fine. We have a few more approvals with the City of Statesville that we need to get, but we're just about on target with that. Contract's ready to go. The File Building Demo, and most of you don't, maybe not, don't know what the File Building is, but if you look out, it's the White Building, that you can see out of this window. 1936, Susan, or close, 19... Not that you're that old, but you think you know everything around here.
I understand.
I went straight to Susan.
That either.
But years ago, when I was in high school, it was the Agriculture Extension Service, and then it was a Fire Marshal Building, and everybody's been in it. And now it's, well, all the files are now gone, but it's called the Old File Building. And that demo project is happening in preparation for the new entrance and our handicap parking area. So that building will be down sometime by the end of July, mid-August, we hope. And it'll come down very slowly. It'll be nibbled down from the top to the bottom. That was bid out, and our bids ranged from $77,200 up to $350,000, which was an interesting spread, and things in between it. So we're ready to start that one. We'll be moving people around. We thank all of you for being patient with us. Now, this project here will take, we've got 300 days on it. With weather, I would say it's going to be a one-year project, so we're going to be living in some construction for a while.
Is there any known asbestos tile or anything else asbestos?
In this building over here? Part of it's already been abated, and part of the bid was to complete the abatement, and it's not tile. Tile's been removed. What we have now is, it's a wall skim coat. It looks similar to this plaster, and not all the walls, just certain walls have it. And part of that bid process was to abate that. So that'll start right before demo.
Good.
Now, that's, and on demo projects, we have to have a full asbestos report and an asbestos abatement plan, asbestos monitoring plan as well, before we can even demo it and get our permits from the state. The Jennings Park project, that is a CIP estimate, and Stewart will be working hand-in-hand with Stewart. And I believe Manager Moll wants, we've negotiated something, and that comes back to the Board for an approval for a contract. Correct, okay. Government Center South Parking Lot, you were exposed to that last meeting, and we are in construction drawings and just kind of moving through that right now. Now, it's just an interesting project, and we are working on the unknown fire-water lines that you asked about. The Meeting Street Old EMS Demo, and that's down here at where Vintage Motors is, and it used to be Boggs Motor Company and a lot of things down here on this corner. Used to be EMS till we moved EMS to the new Public Safety Building. And we're not demoing the building. Actually, we needed more space. Vehicle Services needed more space. And through small projects, and structural engineering evaluation of the building, we've been able to get at least another 12 to 15 years out of that building, which saves a huge capital expenditure currently. And so the demo part is actually taking off some of the deteriorated wing on the front. It's got a rounded piece. And right now, that building is being leased or rented by Vintage Motors, who's right next door, who's using it for their office until their new offices are built, which should be fairly soon. And then the other part of the demo project is not just that rounded wing, it has also taken out some offices inside where we have the original arch-shaped building that looks a lot like Vehicle Services now. And it'll be open all the way through, it'll be plenty of storage, and that, now that project's been going on, Manager Moll, for about, well, four years?
At least.
Yeah.
We've taken it little pieces at a time.
Yep. We jacked up foundations on corners, we got the building stable, and now we've saved quite a bit by current budgets, by being able to push that on down the road till later on.
Have the spring issues been abated?
Not abated.
Diverted?
Well, what we thought was spring issues was actually deteriorated stormwater culverts. So we had all of them cammed with robots several years ago, and we found the problems. And we, what was the problem was, was it wasn't the springs coming up underneath flooding the area. What was the problem was, was upstream, several blocks, trees, swing sets, logs, you name it, was coming through, and had blocked these culverts. And these culverts are like 4, 5 foot in diameter. So once we got them all cleared out, and we had the whole thing evaluated, we had plenty of water flow. The only problem we had was the 100-year flood that flooded Statesville High School several years ago, and they had an issue here, but it was mainly because of blockage of debris. Now, we did find an interesting culvert. It's a concrete culvert that goes from Meeting Street, goes three blocks uptown, and we ran a robot up in, up in it, and it goes underneath the fire station, it keeps going for a ways until there's some stormwater. And that culvert, I could probably stand up in it. It's that tall. It's a concrete precast culvert, or cast-in-place culvert. And we found some damage, but it's not under our building. Actually, it's two blocks up.
It doesn't go under Gene's business?
I mean, there, yeah. Actually, it's underneath your business. It goes under Vintage Motors and Fire Station, and keeps going on up. And we also found lots of tires, concrete blocks, limbs, trees, and all the stuff in it. But as far as the, what's under our building, we're fine.
Well, if we ever miss Commissioner Howe and have a culvert stoppage, we know where to look.
It's interesting to look at it on the camera when we ran the robots up and looking at it, because we found a lot of things. Interesting. So anyway, yes, to answer your question, we didn't find any active springs. What we found was pathways for other springs to come through and keep going. The bottom of your sheet...
You missed Barium Springs Sewer.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Too excited here. Barium Springs Sewer Project is a project that we've had on TAB for a couple of years, and it is tying our rec center and our Parks and Rec Office to the Town and Troutman Sewer System. Right now, they're on a very old pump station, and it's limping through. But all of this is part of preparation for future fairgrounds use. The Town and Troutman has already built a line through the fairgrounds, and we are preparing our line to tie into it, which opens up all the recently acquired county property for wastewater sewer use. And then, of course, there's plenty of water. So this is just in preparation for whatever may come down the pipe on that one, okay? The, oh wait, I did miss that. Okay, Meeting Street, I've got it. Now, we'll go down to Harrell Street. The Harrell Street, yeah, Harrell Street, Stockton Street parking lots are the ones. One of them is right at the corner where the old Axley property was, the house, that we had to take it down, and we needed parking back when we were building the jail. So we took all the parking we could get. The City of Statesville gave us that one, and then the one behind the old jail office, which is on a one-way street on the left. We took a lot of houses down to do all this, and this was for parking for jail overflow, I'm sorry, Hall of Justice overflow parking. Now, the City of Statesville allowed us to do that back in 2016, when we got started on this one. But we had to, after the jail, we had a couple of years to go ahead and bring these projects, either put them back in grass, or upgrade them to a full city, up to code, up to city standard paved parking lot with curb guttering, landscaping and such, which is a whole process of its own. So both Harrell Street and Stockton Street is just kind of continuing what we said that we would do, and if we don't do it, then those parking lots, which is gravel now, will go back into grass. But these are in your 2022 CIP.
Are we going to hold these up a little bit till we get the elections called up to that? Because if that could be cheaper to pave them all at one time.
If we can get approval from the City of Statesville to pave the elections parking lot and do all three of them together and have some cost savings, then that will be something that we can certainly do, and we will certainly look at doing.
We can start that approval process whenever you're ready.
And with the parking lots, I'm sure there's some storm drainings in there that we can use CARES Act money on.
And that is, yes, thank you for saying that. That is one of the things that, as far as infrastructure, we can use ARP funds for. So what we're doing with all of these is, if there is anything that has stormwater work associated with it in any of these projects, if we can use ARP funds to cover these projects, then that will free up funds to be able to do other things. So we're really looking through, Ms. Cheek, I keep looking at her, she is... She is digging through things with a fine-tooth comb. And if she can find a way to fund it with ARP funds, she's adding that to the list. That list will come back to the Board of Commissioners for approval. Everything that we can identify, that we can spend those funds for. So some of these things may shift, may move a little bit. We may be funding it from a different funding source. But we're working through that, and hopefully, we'll have a list soon to bring back to the board for approval.
So we haven't started the process for that other parking lot yet?
We have not applied for the city yet, no.
Okay.
That is a process that we have to go back before the DRC for in the City of Statesville.
We have to go through the Design Review Committee, the Technical Review Committee, the Stormwater Committee, because what we will be asking them to do is to give us impervious surface. This is in the basin for Free Nancy Stream, which has seemed to be the one that gave Statesville High School an issue. So they've been real protective of that. That's why we've gone the route we have with the grass parking lot. But we can start that process at any time. But there'll be a lot of reviews from the City of Statesville and approvals, if we get them. Okay. So that's those two. Several years ago, if you can remember, we did the roof for this building, Government Center, G C roof, G C A, two A, above ground. So we dried the roof in, which we had a lot of issues there. Now, we're drying the underneath of the building in. And then after that, it's time to work on the side elevations of the building. G C four E, which is Phase Four exterior windows, is in the 2022 CIP. And that will involve removing all these windows. Because it is a historical building, we can't replace any of these windows. They have to be taken out, similar to what they did at the Clock Tower or are doing at the Clock Tower, kind of in phases. We've taken all the windows out. They'll go to a company that specializes in historical windows. They'll have to be refurbished. We even have to use the same glazing. If it's not damaged, if not, then we have to, well, they would find glazing of a similar age. And then they come back and put them in. And I would expect that they would probably take out about a dozen windows at a time. So that is Project G C four E. And you can see our estimated cost in 2020. Then there was G C four E Brick. If we dry the top and the bottom, we've got a, our brick is like a sponge here. And we've got a lot of mortar joints and the types of brick that it is, that it's absorbing water as well. So that project is repointing the brick that needs it, make the repairs, and then sealing this brick and get it on preventive maintenance sealing program. So we're not sucking moisture water through the brick into the plaster. And basically, that's why we've had these issues in this building. After that project, then this building is sealed up and conditioned exterior, on the exterior. We're in good shape. And then it'll be up to the county to continue that and maintain that. G C Phase Five is the new handicap, or actually, new entrance for the building, which will be somewhere, and we don't even have a design yet, between this building and the south wing building. It'll tie the architectural elements of both buildings into one entrance. And then, where the file building is, will also tie into this as an elevated handicap, straight-in entrance into the lobby. So that one, we get started with design. It's also in your 2022 CIP, and we'll start that design this year as well. And lastly, the Fairgrounds Master Plan Project. And right now, as far as projects, we're on hold. I don't know, Manager Moll, can you give me any update on that?
We are. And I think the board is familiar. In order to master plan, we want to master plan adjacent properties as well. So we're in a holding pattern until that is secured, and then we'll begin our master planning process. And that will be a very extensive process. We will involve all kinds of stakeholders. The Town of Troutman, Town of Statesville, our cooperative extension, all of our different partners will come to the table and talk about how we can master plan that site and have really a regional agriculturally-driven event center there. So we're really excited about that. But we want to make sure when we do it, we do it correctly, and we do it with all the property there. So we're in a holding pattern on that right now.
And that's what I have for tonight. I will update, I will update this sheet each month. It'll be in your board packet each month. I will be at a meeting each month to answer any questions. I will not go into the detail of the description, but if there's changes on any of these specific questions that you've asked, then I will let you know. Other than that, I'll just be mainly here just to answer questions if there's no changes.
Thank you for the redesign. That's perfect. And if you can, from month to month, if you can highlight any of the progress or changes in yellow.
Yes, in yellow. Got it.
What the changes are.
Yep.
And then we can let you know if you want to be briefed by exception, or we're good to go.
Okay.
Can we also get on that project with the city for the elections, because the voting starts in February unless they change it?
Absolutely, yes.
Just to remind you. It'll be there for now.
Yeah. If they can't digest three parking lots at once, then see if we can't get them to digest the elections parking lot.
Well, we already have approval for the other two. The approval for the other two, that was part of the jail project construction, the detention center. So the Harrell Street and Stockton Street, it's ready to go. We just, they've already approved it. They're actually saying, in order to close out that project, you need to put these two lots in. So those were part of that jail construction project. And once we pave those, that's done. The elections parking is a different procedure, and we have to go, we haven't gotten approval from City of Statesville to do permanent paved lot for that. So that is, we have to go through that approval process. The other two, we already have.
Not tied to the others.
Correct. It is not tied to the others.
Proceed.
However, Commissioner Hap was suggesting that if we paved all three at the same time, there could probably be some cost savings for mobilization for paving, the paving contractor. But as far as the approval process, Stockton and Harrell already approved. We have to go through the approval process with the City of Statesville on the Board of Elections parking lot.
Let's do that at flank speed, and then if all of them can come together, fine. If not, probably just, if we can get that paved before the elections, that's just a priority to do.
Absolutely.
Is when?
Voting starts in February, early voting of '22, next year.
We'll do what we can.
Good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much, David. All right. We have announcements of vacancies on boards and commissions. We'll announce those this evening. Three announcements for the Planning Board. And as Manager Moll noted, not two, but one announcements for the Schools Facilities Task Force. Appointments to boards and commissions, do you want to run through those?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. Central Anna Workforce Development Board, we have two appointments. And Todd Williams has volunteered as the Education Public Schools representative, and Richard Hill has volunteered to serve as the Organized Labor Representative. Farmland Preservation Advisory Board, two appointments. Charles Carter and Bill Pope have both volunteered to serve again. I Care Boards of Directors, one appointment. Heather Griffin has volunteered to serve again. Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority, one appointment. Kevin Donaldson has volunteered to serve again. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have one appointment. Mr. Jim Nixon has volunteered to serve again. And then also, it's not a requirement, but the JCPC does like to receive the board's blessing on the other appointments. Carrie Nitsu, Deborah Brown, Laura Johnson, and Jen Winters have all volunteered to serve again. And then, if you recall, we are pulling the Jury Commission, because we have more than one on that one. And finally, the Troutman Planning Board, ETJ, one appointment. And Jay Mark Taylor has volunteered to serve again. So these are all reappointments.
Thank you. Is there any unfinished business anticipated for the seven o'clock hour or this meeting? And we do have a public comment period this evening. The sign-up sheets are out front. That's limited to three minutes, strictly enforced. New business? Any new business to come before us? Do you want to give us a quick preview of the county manager's report?
Absolutely. Just two things to report. One is a reminder that we will not have a commissioner meeting the first week in July due to the July Fourth holiday. And according to our budget ordinance, I'm required to officially report to the board the next regular meeting regarding transfer amounts between departmental funds. And the board has also requested that we report usage of contingency funds in construction projects. So based on these guidelines, I'd like to report to the board that there was a transfer from contingency in the amount of seventy-one thousand, three-hundred-and-seven dollars for the construction of the lined landfill sale six. This additional, it's money that was already in the project ordinance, but it was a separate line on the project ordinance that was contingency. And we're transferring that money from contingency to construction. And a lot of the funds is based on the amount of rain that we received. And there were, with trying to get that sale open, and the weather delays and things of that nature. So I do want to report the transfer of that money from contingency in that construction project ordinance to construction.
Thank you very much. We now will move into a closed session. Anything else? We'll move into a closed session for attorney-client discussions pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 Subs. A3. And we will do that in the South Wing Conference Room.